Manistee Planning Commission, April 7th, 2022. Time now is 7:02. Please rise for your pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please take roll.
Commissioner Slawinski. Commissioner Samansky. Commissioner Remberto.
Here.
Commissioner Weiner.
Here.
Commissioner McBride.
Here.
Commissioner Yoder.
Here.
Chair Whitliff.
Here, thank you. Approval of agenda, at this time the planning commission can take action to approve the April 7th, 2022 agenda. Their motion.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mick, second.
I'll say.
By Roger, discussion? None, please take roll.
Commissioner Slawinski.
Yes.
Commissioner Samansky.
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner.
Yes.
Commissioner Remberto.
Yes.
Commissioner McBride.
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder.
Yes.
Chair Whitliff.
Yes, thank you. Conflict of interest, just wondering if there's any commissioner with any conflicts on the agenda tonight?
Not for me.
None? None? Okay. Approval of minutes, planning commission can approve the March 3rd, 2022 meeting minutes.
Our motion, prove.
Motion by Bob, second.
I'll second.
Marlene? Any discussion? None, please take roll.
Commissioner Slawinski.
Yes.
Commissioner Samansky.
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner.
Yes.
Commissioner Remberto.
Yes.
Commissioner McBride.
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder.
Yes.
Chair Whitliff.
Yes, thank you. Correspondent? Correspondents? None? Public hearing, 51 Ninth Street. And we will open the public hearing. Applicant. Well, the time is 7:04 for opening.
Oh, okay.
Do we have the plans?
Yes. Yeah, I'll just scroll down on the screen for you. Thank you.
Who's got the plans?
Go down to the next. Yeah.
And if you need to zoom in on them, you can as well.
Yeah, we can just zoom in on... Oh, that's not great. Let me put this one on the...
The document game?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, these are bled out. We're just gonna throw up the existing building up here.
You got the plans?
I was gonna pull it up just on the computer, but I think this will look better.
Yeah, that's the one I was telling you about.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's along the... Yeah, the river, yeah.
And slide it down a little bit more, Katie, the other way. So they can see the parking lot and everything. I can zoom out a little bit. If you want to bring it up a little bit more. On the other way.
Yeah, the other way.
Do the opposite of what he says.
Sorry.
Does that look good?
Is everybody good with that?
They've all gotten it in front of them as well, Ken.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay. So it's, Ken Armour, 51 Ninth Street. So it's, I'm sure you all recognize the building. We're looking at putting a small grow processing and kitchen in there. So the building's been vacant for quite some time.
Just has.
Back, make it look nice and...
Sure, sure. You're gonna put a grow project in the kitchen?
A processing plant, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Not a grow.
Wait a minute, there's a difference between a grow and processing.
All three, a grow and a processing. It's in, it's in the district.
Are you gonna turn any of the grow into edibles or anything?
Yeah.
At that stage?
Yeah, the pro... That's the processing, yeah. Yep. It's quite, obviously it's smaller than Ironworks. It's only, I think it's 12,000 square feet.
Yeah.
But it's been vacant for a long time. Obviously, it's blighted. You see the back of it, all the graffiti and the neighbors have had their ways with it or... It should bring up the area pretty good and obviously create another tax base.
How many people do you expect to employ?
I think that would be a question for the operator, but I'm talking to them. I think it was somewhere around 15 to 20. So some of the advantages, I thought, or we thought, was in that district, there's a lot of density with residential, so they're, I mean, they're great jobs, so they're... The walkability for, for people that don't have cars and things like that, within six blocks, there's quite a density of people, so...
That's kind of a rough neighborhood, though. I mean, I would think too, from what I've been reading in the papers.
Rough as far?
As, I should say, more policing in that area than other areas of town.
Well, these...
So I don't know what the problem is over there, but like I say, it's...
That's the problem in the world, but... The, uh, these facilities really do good for that because they have the security all the way around it. The police have monitors for it, so... It's free monitoring for the city and nothing happens anywhere around these things because, you know, it shows the entire road. 60, so it's, it's free monitoring for, for the city and the neighbors and it's easier to break into a bank than it is one of these things.
Yeah, yeah. Well, now, at least you can see on TV with the cameras, we're looking for this guy. He's got the hood and the jacket. He's breaking it. At least we can see it on the monitor, you know, which he does, but, yeah, I read from your report, yeah, it's gonna be highly, you know, secure.
I think it's a good, yeah, it's a good location. It's a good, the building has just been restored. Jeff's used it and...
Who owns it now, Mike, you know?
I do now, but Jeff had it.
I mean, where'd you get it from though? Who bought, who passed? Jeff saying?
For many, many years, since, I think he bought it from Century Boat, probably. Yeah, yep.
I would think so. I would think so.
Yeah.
Because didn't PC use that for storage or did you not use it for storage that one time?
That's all he uses, it's just cold storage, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
So all the electricity, plumbing and insulation, everything's out of that building now?
Yep, where the plans are, the structural plans are done.
Are you gonna have to take the floor out, like you did at the Ironworks?
No, I don't think so on this. I think they can do the cuts from talking to them. It's not as detailed as Ironworks. But I don't think they'll have to, talking to them. But yeah, it's, it's bare bones. It's just raw steel, so they'll start from, start from scratch.
Yeah, that's what I mean. That's a heck of an investment, sir. Have you had these before? Had a grow before?
Other than Ironworks?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you have.
I'm just in the, uh, the, kind of the real estate play of them. I'm not a pot guy myself.
No, but I mean, to start one of these businesses, it, it's a pretty good investment. So obviously you have the people behind you with the money to do this.
The tenants are, yeah.
And if it doesn't happen and you get halfway through it, and then what happens? We walk away, then what have we got then? Worse than what we have now, you know what I mean?
Well, the way they're structured. I mean, they're paying for the buildout, so the money's there, the money's all been approved, the money's set aside.
Really?
So there's, I mean, leases are signed, so there's no, there's no going back and...
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
What, what's the plan, if I could ask, for the outside, the exterior? Is it gonna be sited, painted? Do you know?
It'll be, I think that's on the list there, but what we have scheduled, yeah, is a complete cleanup and, and paint.
Yeah, it's just a metal warehouse, isn't it?
Just all broken cement in that building. I mean, it's quite an eyesore. Are you gonna put any greenery or anything, yeah, there, you know, to kind of...
Yeah, I've been working with, I was working with Zach for the last couple of months and we're talking some, some phase two maybe on the waterfront and then, you know, a different landscape package, but this is a really economy project. I thought it was a great...
That's a good use of the building.
Drive through there, you know, it'll...
Well, I don't know who'd ever drive through there, to tell you the truth. From what I know of that area, yeah. 12th Street, I don't know, unless you go down to sewage fishing, but...
Well, there's, yeah, there's quite a bit with the boat.
Yeah, boat on 10th Street.
Yeah, there's not a lot of businesses, but maybe this will, I mean, you start cleaning up one building and, you know...
There's a couple other empty ones, aren't there, down that way too? That brick building and, right?
The old mill is, is empty.
I mean, yeah, you're right. Yeah, you're, yeah, you're right.
And the old loading shutters.
Okay.
I have a question for Katie. Since Mr. Armour is the real estate arm of this development, shouldn't the leases be here also?
Not necessarily. His name is on the property, so, you know, as the property owner, I would say that he is going to be the, you know, the final say with anything that's done to the property. I guess it could be helpful to have them here, but I don't know how many questions they may have been able to answer. I guess maybe Ken could speak on that more, but, but typically the property owner, if their name is on the property, they're the ones to, you know, make the decisions and speak on things.
Didn't we have something before, if the people who were presenting this project and the property owners didn't show, we could table it, but?
Yes.
He's the property.
But he is the, he is.
He's the owner.
Yeah, but I mean, representation from the other people.
So the difference here is, is roughly that Ken is getting us the special use for the property essentially, but then offering to lease out the plan that he has developed to a grow facility, so it's not necessarily even that he has one in mind or he, he wouldn't even have to have one lined up. He could just be requesting it, saying, this is what I'm building out, this is what we agree to, and then trying to find a, a leasing for that. Much like a restaurant might or, you know, if they, whatever. So that's really what you're looking at here. A little bit different than what we ran through last time where the applicants were presenting it because they had a vested interest in it where the, the owners of the buildings were looking to sell. This is a little bit different.
I had to ask the question, so... On the, on the development of this, on the, would be the west side of the building where all, what old Plant 3 was? Is all that gonna be removed?
Talking to the engineer, west side.
Manistee Street side.
Okay.
West side.
Okay, okay. It's gonna be...
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, okay, that gives me a clear depiction. They had left that there prior to the acquiring it because, uh, I was told by the previous person, as long as that was there, that footprint was allowed.
Oh, yeah.
So it was grandfathered in, so that was the reason that it was left there. I don't know if there'd be a reason to, you know, obviously it looks, I mean, look what it looks like now. That's what it's looked like, so anything will be better. I was hoping to incorporate some, as the parking, clean it all up and, you know, make it look nice, it would be. But it's all depending on, I think you guys have the, the water runoff calculations, because I know Brian just finished those. So a lot of that was determined, but the reason that was left there, and I was wondering that too, is because if someone ever wanted to put a big factory, obviously the setbacks are already grandfathered in, so they would never have to worry about it, so that's something that we, I guess, there'd be no reason, it would just be a cost.
Well, it'd be, it'd be a cost, but I mean, it is unsightly.
Yeah, I agree.
Kind of like the cement over in the north side of town and all the marijuana stores, you know, I mean, a lot of the cement was taken out. A lot of greenery was put in, which is nice and... To me, anyway, that would, that would be a huge plus for that area.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it looks like heck, so...
We're looking at it.
I know, I spent many years in that footprint.
That's what I thought. Yeah, yeah, I thought, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I guess that would be one of the, the first step was just to get the thing going, try and get the cleanup again, and that would be something we would obviously look at for, for a phase two to, you know, make it...
Big pile of dirt can, can leave with the trees growing out of it?
Well, put nice trees in it.
Right, sure, right. It'd be really nice, yeah. I mean, obviously it'll look... When it's done.
That's the part that Katie wanted to keep, right?
Well, that's why I put a question mark as well.
But I don't know how bad that is yet until we can get some real good cleaners in there. I mean, is it salvageable to, because there is a curb cut there existing. So is it salvageable to make that the parking lot? I mean, that'd be fabulous if it was, if you could get all cleaned up and...
Yeah, those, those aren't curb cuts. Those are entryways into the plant, when the plant was...
Were they? It looks like curb cuts, but there's so much dirt and garbage on there, you can't really tell.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that is, same with on the backside. Cement is broken and...
Yeah, well, it's all blacked out.
And of course, the streets we don't have to worry about, because it's a city, so...
Was.
Oh, yeah, it was.
And I, I saw a drawing here of...
That's the proposed parking lot? City road right there.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
Was a city road, now it's on a skid.
Nothing wrong with that either, just a little bumpy, that's all.
Speedy, going through, speed bumps.
I'll knock your dentures out, you go too fast on there.
We're working on that, Ken. That's not a high priority, that isn't that...
Katie, do you have the over, or the drawing of the building with the parking lot, proposed parking lot? This one?
I'm sorry, I went to the wrong one.
So do you have any idea the size or the amount of marijuana you're gonna be growing?
It's just one Class C. One Class C, so I think a Class C is 1,500 plants.
A limit?
Yeah, one Class C is, is, allows up to 1,500.
Up to 1,500, damn.
I think that's about the space that they typically use, um, 8,000 square feet and then the other...
But that's what I mean, and that's, this person that you're gonna have doing all this, yeah, you gotta figure that.
Yeah, that's what, that's what the, I mean, you actually have the, it's been through the architecture, so you have the...
Okay.
You have the grow rooms, you have everything right in front of you.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I couldn't see, you had, the building broke down into, but I couldn't read what the rooms were. The print was so small.
Yeah.
But I obviously have drying rooms and then your processing room and then your grow room and...
Do you want me to go over a couple of them? Of the, do you want me to go over any of the rooms?
Well, when he, yeah.
It sounds like you have a good idea of what is in there, but yeah, it's, um...
If there's any other questions, I mean...
Flower room, bedroom, mother, mother clone, office, security, commercial kitchen.
Would you bring that up on the thing so I could see it, sweetie?
Yeah, it's, it is still pretty small on here, um...
That's what I mean, I couldn't read.
Right.
I mean, you're gonna grow it, I mean...
Yeah, it's in the...
Then you're gonna have to process it off and then you're gonna have to... Yeah, you're gonna, that's a little bit of a process. All under one roof, you're gonna have to have partitions.
Several rooms in there.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I only got one.
We have a question on the address. It's 51 Ninth Street and that plant was like 925 Manistee Street.
We've been working on this for several months and it was a mess when me and Jeff started this process and then Katie has helped me the last couple of weeks. We just applied because it's been a mess with consumers, with DTE, because the actual address is 51 Ninth Street, but like I said, Katie and I have been working on this for a couple of weeks and it looks like the new address that's applicable is an old address they used to use 60, 80 years ago and it's 1,009 Manistee Street. So consumers...
That's what the old Century Plant was, that's what it was.
And that's what Jeff kept using, but it's nowhere to be seen, so it was extremely confusing, because whenever you send a, a utility company or anybody there, 51 Ninth Street's the boat launch.
Yeah.
Yeah, the entrance there, so...
To choose from, isn't it?
She understands all the paperwork.
Yeah, right.
And so that will be from moving forward as of a week or whatever, you'll start seeing it being labeled as 1009 Manistee Street.
And the correction's gonna be made on the parcel number as well?
And that'll clean up a lot, because as we found out, there's four or five different addresses that are being used scattered throughout there that nothing, it belongs to nothing. It must have been back in the day.
Oh, sure.
At old houses or that are gone. So it's been confusing, so that'll clean up a lot for the, for the...
How long have you had it?
Uh, six, eight months.
Oh.
I've been focused on this other thing.
What was that new address, 10?
1009 Manistee Street. So there's some records that reflect that address way back, so it shouldn't be too confusing to the system. But, and then Katie said, but it apparently lines up the driveway. We can get that right where it lines up, so it's easy for the city to, to keep that.
Mike, do you want to ask him about the, where the... Yeah, do you have anywhere for loading facilities of this anywhere?
I don't believe there's a loading dock, yes.
No.
But for, if it ends up marijuana facility, it's supposed to be a secured loading dock.
Interior.
Security.
Secured interior loading, so...
Well, that is something I wanted to go over with you guys, so that was one of the items on, on this sheet. Towards the bottom, I put in the definitions for marijuana safety compliance establishment, as well as a marijuana secure transport establishment, and with the definition of marijuana secure transport establishment, those are required to follow the section on ware, public warehousing, which requires things to be, you know, done inside, inside a structure, but that is something that I wanted to address with you as well, Ken. If your, if these uses are going to, you know, fall under the umbrella of your grow facility, so a marijuana safety, safety compliance establishment means a person licensed to test marijuana, including certification for potency and the presence of contaminants, and then the marijuana secure transporter establishment is a person licensed to obtain marijuana from a marijuana establishment in order to transport marijuana to a marijuana establishment, so...
Neither one of those...
So you will not be licensed to do either of these things?
No, no entitlements.
But to transport it out of there, you've got to have your secure loading area that's enclosed.
Okay, so that's by the state, but...
Yeah.
Okay.
Then I guess that would be, yeah, mandated by the state. There's a loading dock there now, so it's not a, I mean, it's not a big deal. If, if the state mandates it, then obviously, yeah.
But nothing, we, we couldn't figure out how you would get a, a, a van inside to load it once...
Other than overhead doors, where they can pull in.
Right, but you're, but none of it showed, there's no, there's no, everything is a door on your plan, that's...
I can amend that. I'll find out if it is, and that would be a question that I would just ask them if it... And they have other facilities downstate, so it's something they're very well accustomed to. It could have been, but I use my own architect, so...
With that in mind, and would it be possible to talk to these people that are gonna grow this thing? Could, could we have them at one of the meetings, you think?
I don't, do you even have somebody in mind that...
Well, yeah, you, you just mentioned they have other facilities, so they can put their doing.
Different people?
Yeah.
Once I solidify it with a certain group, absolutely, I mean...
You know, so, I mean, we, questions like that, I mean, you shouldn't have to know it. You just owned a building, right?
Right.
And then you're gonna lease this building to these people.
Well, I'm handling the construction, so it's...
Or whatever.
Yeah, I can report back right away. I mean, we want to...
But to get a little more familiar with the project itself, it'd probably be a good idea, like somebody suggested.
Because they're, they're leaving you hanging with stuff with, you're gonna be the last man going, all I gonna have is here.
Yeah.
It'll be something we'll know immediately, yeah. I mean, now that you brought that to, to my attention, it's something I'll address.
Would that be reasonable, Mike, to ask?
Like Katie said, you guys, you guys... You have to feel comfortable with, you know, the, the situation, so you, you guys could request that the, the person that's gonna be operating it to show up. There's also safeguards as far as the state goes, as far as like who can obtain a license and, and establish it. Ken, I don't believe you're, you're holding the growing license, is that correct?
Correct.
So it'd be somebody that, you know, just like any other thing, there's background checks that the state makes those, those individuals go through that hold the license, but if you would like to speak with them, I think that's a reasonable request, especially considering some of the concerns that have been brought up tonight, just as far as like, hey, is secure transport gonna be there? You know, I think potency, I, I believe you have to check that onsite, so I'm, I have a little, especially if there's a, a baking or edible area in this, I'm almost positive you have to have a checking of that, so that would be a use that would kick off some of these other things, but it can be as simple as adding a loading and unloading bay onto the edge of this, this, this thing, but the current plans don't show that.
Well, and it's, and it can't, it can't be a loading, unloading, it has to be secured.
Yeah, indoors, and, and, and these plans don't show that.
The place we approved maybe a year ago, just down the street from where you're at, there is another grow facility that's been approved on the corner of Tenth and Manistee.
There's also one in Glacheski that...
I, I don't believe that's...
Over by Dunes Drive, that...
Not yet.
But it's still...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's still active.
Oh.
Still licensed and active.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Anyways, they did have a double door so that they could bring a, a van inside, and that was their secure loading area.
There's no, there's no door on that at all? I don't have it in front of me.
There's no door on...
That's the only picture we got there, boss, and that's there on the west side.
There's no door that would allow for anything other than a person to walk through.
Okay, I mean, there's...
Doors.
Yeah.
Besides two garage doors on it. Oh, yeah, there's, yeah, there's on the building, just not on the plan.
Yeah. But I think that once I, on which operator is best, they're gonna have to come and apply to the city anyway, so that would be a good time for you to ask them a question.
But they, they can't change the, the plan at that time unless you come in and amend your plan, so right now it, it wouldn't meet the requirements for the licensing aspect of it, so, because they, you don't have a secure unloading and loading position shown on your plan, so they can't approve that use if, if it's not shown, so...
Didn't you just say the testing and secure transport are the only ones that need that? And neither one of those designations are in, are gonna be in this building.
That is per, per the zoning ordinance, but from what, what's been explained here, the state does require something, so with that being required by the state, you, you know, the plan would have to be amended, you would have to make sure whatever ends up on, you know, onsite matches these plans, so ultimately, you know, what's going to be there will have to be approved by this...
And we could check with the city attorney to make sure that this is all, all good. It's just, uh... We don't want to make you come back, you know, and amend this or not be able to grant you it because it doesn't meet the requirements.
Yeah, those would be what? State requirements?
Right.
So I guess, yeah, I mean...
While it's under construction and you know you're gonna have to have that.
You gotta have a secure place to, you can't just walk the front door, bring it in, walk it up from the front door, put it in the van, you gotta...
Yeah, I'm not sure on that, but I can find out, yeah.
Yeah, and, and we can ask George as well. I know George is, I think he's on vacation this last week, so it's, it's made going back and forth difficult, but we'll, we'll for sure check that and just get an answer on that. You know, because...
That's like your testing facility. You, you're gonna, if you're processing and making edibles, you're gonna have to test it.
They don't test them there. They sent them.
It all, yeah, it's, that's a whole completely different...
So that could be, that, that could be how Ken doesn't have to meet that requirement as well, if they're sending it off for testing, but the secure transport, I, I believe was a, a sticking point in the last two grow facilities. We've, same issues where they've, they've had to do it indoors. Glacheski.
They were transport though?
I don't know if they were running a transport. They had to, for their exchange, they had to, they're growing and I don't know if they were actually the transport. I don't believe they were, but they had to do everything indoors. The one on Glacheski, I don't believe is their own transport, and they, they were adamant the state was, was on them about that, so we can, we can verify with George on next week and then we'll go from there.
Well, I guess what I would ask is that, that you allow me to move forward. I gotta keep this construction going and then we can make the amendment if that, it's not a big deal, add an overhead door or whatever, if needed to be done, I just...
While you're in construction and you know you're gonna have to have it.
It'll never get approved by the state if we don't have it, yeah.
Yeah, might as well do it now.
But you said we need to, it needs to be on the plan tonight and we're the first.
It should be on the plan tonight to, to move forward with it, and if we have questions on it, we should just call a special meeting on it at a later point and table it, because the real, the real problem is, is if, if you, if you move forward and it's something that isn't on the plan or isn't shown, then it, or stipulated, it's hard to, you know, move forward. You could stipulate it.
So we can't stipulate it?
Yeah, if you want to, that's another thing you guys are more than welcome to do, is stipulate a final draft for revision and approval at a later date to move them forward. That is completely up to you guys, but, yeah, I mean, that is a way to move it forward. I would just caution when you guys do things like that, because it makes it very difficult to go back and hold people to things that are not accounted for or that we find out at a later date, that our stipulation is only goes this wide and we really needed to go this wide, so I would really like to check with the city attorney on that, just because the marijuana laws since this zoning ordinance was written... just because, um, the marijuana laws since this zoning ordinance was written have changed drastically. This was, if you, if you read through the marijuana laws, there, a lot of it references medical. And this was, uh, written, a lot of it before the retail came in. So the laws very much could have changed, um, on what is required.
We're just trying to cut some, cut off some headaches from you.
Well, could that leave?
So it would be.
Good news. Be. The good news is the public hearing will be resolved tonight.
Right.
So we can get that phase.
Couldn't we could essentially, uh, with him, read what he's doing and then wait till formally make an improvement till he brings the proper plans?
Like Mike was saying, that there, there, if we put stipulations on it, there may be something outside the stipulations that we don't catch. And nothing, nothing against.
No, the problem.
But we, we just, we just want to make sure that everything is right for, for you and for the city.
And there are stipulations that you guys can look to make tonight and then ask Ken to update his, his site plan for that to show that. There seems to be concern with the landscaping, um, and any other concerns you have. And then you could ask for an updated plan at that time that reflects, you know, whatever, or he could, Ken could know that he know, he needs that, it's going to be a stipulation before he moves forward. So he has an idea of what.
He needs to do.
You guys are looking at prior to, um, his next meeting where, you know, you can come in and just say, we really want to see this. And then you're able to plow it right through, um, versus, you know, he doesn't anticipate something. So if there are stipulations that you guys are looking at, you can relay them and then at least let, you know, Ken here know what you're thinking.
Ken, it sounds like you might be up against some kind of deadline. Is there a challenge?
It's terrible deadlines. Number one, the tenants are wavering. I don't know if anybody's in construction here, but things like HVAC units have went from five thousand dollars, twenty thousand. The power pole, the ironworks, the transformer, went from a hundred thousand to nine hundred thousand in a seven-month lead time. And if this thing doesn't, I don't think if you do, if you don't allow it, I don't even know if it's going to.
Well, can't we?
Well, I think we, the idea, whoops, not to interrupt you, go ahead.
First, one person talks at a time, please.
Yeah.
I'd like to kind of table approving that. And as soon as he can get a drawing, we can call a special meeting.
Well, um, remember you guys are in the public hearing, so discussion for, for tabling, will, will have to take place afterwards, but, um, yeah, you guys could look the table and, and move on until you can bring the things forward. But, uh, you know, I, careful, you know, which portion we're in, guys. So, I mean, I realize there's no public here, but, um, besides Jeff, unless he wants to say so. But we are in the public hearing aspect of it, so. If you guys have questions about the plan that's presented, um, you know, just make sure we stay on track with it. But yeah, we can have that discussion here in a little bit.
Want to see if we can head off before it gets him.
Yeah.
How do we, uh, is it possible to approve it as, you know, with, obviously the contingency that the state approves it? Because if the state doesn't approve it, there's no sense in going forward, and I think.
Right, and they won't approve it till we approve it?
The state won't approve it until it's in compliance, so it needs, whatever it needs, the secure.
Yeah, and, and.
Whatever it needs.
They won't, they won't accept it with no overhead door.
Correct, so my argument is, you guys approve it, let me get the supplies and everybody locked under contract. If I can get the construction going and stop the price, it's, it's not going to be approved for CFO. I mean, you guys have the final say anyway. I mean, the CFO and then the state's going to approve it, so you, you're at no risk.
Yeah, the first step is always zoning and getting approval for the use on the property.
Right.
So, uh, that's why he has to wait to, to move forward with the state until he gets through you guys's.
Okay.
So just to clarify that real quick, so that's why he's, it's a long process too. It's probably not a, a short process, you know, but the state does not move fast, so.
Yeah, the way things are going, yeah, every minute's a dollar.
So I guess we, next is to move forward and finish the. We're going to finish the public hearing? Public hearing.
Yeah, finish the public hearing.
So. Is there any other questions?
There's not going to be any signage on this building?
I'm sorry, what?
There's no signage on this building at all?
No, it's just going to be cleaned up. I mean, it's something you don't want to.
Yeah.
I don't think you need, it's not, it's not retail, so all you're doing is improving the, the, the building.
And the lighting outside?
The lighting, there's only whatever is mandated by the state, and I think that's on there. It's in a residential neighborhood, so typically you don't want to put light pollution.
That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, no, it's, uh, no, it's only what's required.
So the, the parking lot will have lights?
Yeah.
I think there's, yeah, there's a couple on there, yeah, whatever the bare minimums are.
Shoebox lighting.
Four, five, five, three or lights, it looks like.
Yeah.
Those are, uh, drainage structures.
Three lights in that area of Manistee Street?
Yeah, probably on the, on the corner of 12th and Manistee. If it's lit, you know?
No, yeah, I don't think so, Mark.
Probably on.
Shot out already.
No.
Eleventh.
No, maybe Mark or, yeah.
Street that is, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe those are.
Yeah, I'm not sure. But whatever the same thing, or the architect has done these several times. Didn't put a, and I can, he didn't put an overhead door. Then it's not required, because he's, this is just me guessing, because he's done a dozen of these things, the same architect, so.
Yeah.
I would, I would be suspect if it, if he missed something.
Well, maybe everybody has different rules or something, maybe, has he, has he built other things here in Manistee?
Not in Manistee, that at Grand Rapids, but he's done several grows.
Yeah, well, then you'd think he'd know that.
Yeah.
You know, but.
But like I say, it's the state that's going to approve it or not approve it, but I, I just need the approval from the, and it's in the district, so I thought it would be an easy one.
Yeah.
In the cannabis district.
Yeah.
Not changing anything, just cleaning up a building and putting it back to use.
Yeah, well, this one, Katie?
What's that?
This, this print.
Master location.
I, I actually only received a small size of that.
That's what I couldn't read, that's what I'm confused.
Here, let me try something.
Either side, I mean, whatever is deemed, I guess, necessary. Probably, I'm thinking to the west, away from 12th.
Yeah.
I mean, that's really not a, wherever the city, because they, it's going to have to be.
It's going to have to be closed.
Yeah, yeah, so it won't be unsightly.
Isn't there one on that side?
Yeah.
They want to cross the tracks with it either too much?
Yeah.
Yeah. Little train will let you know when she goes by.
Um, probably this is probably the most.
Yeah. Yeah, you start moving stuff by train and you're going to start making money, kid. Mock car full.
I don't get this approved, I might jump on that train.
Make sure you're heading south.
Next thing, smoke on the water, we'll have the smoke train.
Yeah, we got smoke on the water coming, didn't it, mate?
Yep. All right, let's, uh, let's keep moving along here.
Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
It's all right. Uh, any other questions?
Don't.
Ali?
Don't.
Shelley?
None.
Ben?
Not this side?
Don't we need any from the staff on the public hearing on this?
Yes, we'll get to that.
Okay.
Yeah.
But that's just.
I got nothing more.
Okay. That is all for now, Sarah, thank you.
Thanks, pleasure.
Move along to, uh, public comment? Does anyone in the audience that would like to say something? Nobody? Okay. Move along to staff?
Oh, uh.
Yes, so I have, is this typically when you guys do the site plan review comments as well? Okay, um, so you will see in your, um, packet from the fire department, they had some comments about, um, paving and the fire suppression plans and alarm plans, third-party review of those plans, um, showing that.
Yeah.
Water's available, Knox box, those typical things that you guys see with these developments. City engineer had a couple comments on, um, you know, stormwater and sanitary, that some of those may need to be updated, but it didn't seem like anything was a hard, um, you know, this needs to be done, just kind of suggestions. And that, you know, the property owner may want to upgrade the service, but, um, I didn't necessarily see anything there with city engineer and DPW that would be, um, required.
Uh, is the city fire department aware of what his intentions are there? As far as what he plans on doing for cooking down and making chemicals?
Um, this, uh, the fire department would have received plans from Zach. This one was a little bit awkward with Zach leaving and me coming on, because we kind of had to transition this project as well, so. I will say that he was the individual to send the plans to the fire department and city engineer DPW. So I can't speak for sure if, you know, I would assume that they have a, a good knowledge of what's going on with this, um, project.
All right.
Check your computer spell check.
Yeah, the fired, yeah, I noticed that one too. Thank you.
All right.
Did you have more?
Yeah, because you're going to need, you're going to do.
And so that was it for the, the, oh, and the police for site plan review, fencing around perimeter with access cameras covering area around structure, um, were their comments. And then I had put together some additional items that we've already kind of, um, gone over some of them, the signage, the lighting, um, landscaping. I did want to point out that you guys do have the ability, um, to require additional buffers, along, you know, in between residential and commercial. I know there's some residential properties on the south side, um, of the development, so you do have the ability to do so. You can also require additional walkways, landscape, um, islands and perimeter buffers where space is available, if you guys see, um, see a need or see that to fit. Are you going to have any exterior dump, well, I guess, I don't know if I should be asking him that at this point. Exterior dumpsters was one of my questions. Part of me assumed that with this type of development, they'd probably keep most things inside, but that was just a question that I had. And we went over those additional uses as defined by the zoning ordinance. And I believe that is all I had. So if you guys had any questions, I know I kind of sent, um, my notes a little bit last minute. So if you guys have any questions, we can definitely go over that. But those were just some of the additional, um, items that I didn't necessarily see that I thought you might want to see.
So the dumpsters, they have to be inside or, or just enclosed outside?
Um, if it is outside, it has to be enclosed, so I wanted to make that note. But, um, I didn't see any dumpster shown on the site plan, and part of me assumed that with a marijuana establishment, they probably keep things inside, but I just wanted to make that note, um, you know, if a external dumpster was brought up, that it's adhering to the ordinance.
Well, we do have a, um.
Ordinance.
Ordinance, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
About having these dumpsters enclosed by.
Letter one out today, a reminder.
Good.
Yes.
What's the must-do date, is it?
July 1st, 2022.
July 1st, okay, I.
Yep.
Is there, like, with chemicals and the type of stuff they'll be throwing in the trash, is there a special way that you have to dispose of that? It just can't go into a landfill?
I, I would, um, almost guarantee that that would be something that'd be regulated by the state as well. I would imagine that they have, um, you know, disposal regulations for, for these types of establishments.
And if I might, how about the odor control?
Yep, yeah, odor control is addressed in the zoning ordinance. Um, that you have to have a carbon fil.
Okay.
Can't carry out the steps in the seeds.
No.
Seeds are all common.
At fifteen hundred plants, you're definitely going to have an odor.
Right, yep, so the zoning ordinance does require a carbon filtration system or something, you know, some alternative system that's approved by a mechanical engineer licensed in Michigan. So that would have to be something, um, you know, that was satisfied with, with this construction.
And if I am not mistaken, when we approved the last one, we had a requirement for it to be, um, a third party. Didn't we, when the one on?
On the odor control.
Yeah, odor control, that it, that it would, um, it met and, uh, all the criteria and a third party reviewed it.
Okay, yeah, that, that could definitely be a stipulation that, you know, would be appropriate for something like this.
Language, you know, and again, that's, we did this, almost everything that we're requiring, we did for the one on Glachewski.
But I, I thought we did that because it was a, such a large, actual grow facility.
This is a large grow facility.
About the same size.
Okay.
And, and again, very similar neighborhood, so I would think. Yeah, I would think that all the criteria that we, if we could basically make all of that known, that would be what we would be expecting.
Yeah, I mean.
So we're, so we're uneven keeled.
There's nothing in there, I mean, uh, the secure transport was a requirement of the other, the other one, just on, you know, reviewing some of the laws, which, uh, I don't know the, how accurate these are. These are Rule 25 of marijuana facility requirements and ensure the safety, security, integrity of operation of marijuana facilities. A grower shall operate a marijuana facility under the following conditions. The marijuana facility operations are within the building that meets the security requirements and passes inspection in these rules of building permit persistent to Rule 26 in these rules. And then marijuana facility operations are within a cult, uh, building except for cultivation may occur in an outdoor area under the following conditions. So that's another concern, if you guys are not wanting to see any cultivation outdoors, um, you need to make a stipulation that all cultivation shall, shall occur indoors. There's, uh, other ones that get into all marijuana is harvested, all drying, trimming, curing, and packaging a marijuana occur inside the building and meet the requirements under these conditions and rules. So there's several, you know, pages on here that, that fall into this, um, including secure transport. But if, um, I don't know how the product gets out of there without a secure transport, but I don't know if it's a requirement for him to have one, is the problem, is what I'm saying. Like the, the, we have required them for like the Glachewski grow. But if that is something that you guys would like to see for the simple fact of health safety, um, of the, the area, you don't, you don't want to see, you know, the transport happen, so you guys can make it a stipulation to move him along. Is just say, you know, even though it might not be a state requirement, we're going to require it as part of health, safety and welfare. So, and then we could move him forward on that, that thought process. So, um, with an amended site plan to be presented in final approval, given at the next planning, the regular scheduled planning commission. So I'm trying to think on my feet, guys, to try to get this moving forward. We've required it for the Glachewski grow, we could require it for this one, is all I'm saying. And then it, it could save them if, uh, if he does get a leasing, because he doesn't know who his leasing is going to be, that wants to do secure transport, then they can, they've already got approval. Um, and they've got the building to show it. So, uh, then, um, we were really big on the odor, making them provide an engineered plan that is then blasted off by the city engineer. And it had to be done by an approved engineer. There was, that was a phasing project on Glachewski, a little bit different. They have to be able to stand alone on their, their own, this is all at once, so, uh, you know, as you guys look over it, nothing in the, in the, the outline, the, the layout of the plan really, you know, uh, from a staff perspective, really blew me away as far as like, you know, not normal. However, like usually on the outside of the building, we like to see a little bit more as far as like, um, you know, I realize it's an existing building, but where's your HVAC, where's your odor control? You know, is there any security lighting, where's your loading, unloading areas? These aren't designated. Uh, we usually like to see these areas fenced. Green space buffers with residential and industrial are a requirement. These things are just not simply shown. So, uh, you know, as we look at this plan, um, you know, green space buffer along Manistee Street and 12th Street and Ninth, isn't a, isn't an overly large requirement, is what, something that we did for Glachewski with Dunes Drive, was we made them put a green space buffer around the entirety of the building, except for the far, the part that faced the industrial area, which this place, you know, faces Manistee Lake, we wouldn't require one there. But those are the things that, like, when you say, hey, we want to be, you know, consistent with our stipulations, these are the things that we, we requested on the Glachewski grow.
That makes sense.
And then we also did additional things, which the fire department and police department requested. They've reviewed the plan, Katie has those stipulations. If, if you guys would, are looking to move forward with this, um, and we get into the discussion and we go towards the master list, these are things that we can look at and discuss.
Yeah.
Katie, do you have anything else?
Nope.
Can I add, if you addressed well enough to your satisfaction about the water runoff into the lake and that?
There were runoff, um, calculations provided, and with the, the size of this lot and the existing, well, the proposed. lot and the existing, well, the proposed coverage really, um, he's well, well under the maximum impervious surface coverage. I got eighteen point eight percent, and I believe, I don't remember off the top of my head, but I know that it was well under what's required for that, um, that district.
So one thing, another thing on the Glachewski, maybe I was looking at this a different way, but, um, there's a lot of water, um, that's used on these, these filtration things, uh, and they, they had a, a water filtration system to help gather and control that water, um, that they put in on their own. Um, I'm pretty sure the state would regulate that, but if that's something, um, the DPW director would have, we think would have at least mentioned it in there, we're not experts on...
Right.
The, the runoff of the water, but if the state's not requiring it, um, then the DPW director, we'd hope, would do that. Uh, the other aspect of this is, um, you can always throw the stipulation in there, obviously, and it's, it's, it's almost a, um, a given, but it's always nice to double down, is that this meets local and state regulations, um, leaving federal out because obviously it's a grow facility.
Right, right. Well, that's what I would...
If I remember, the water filtration system was all designed for the water to be put onto the plants.
Yep.
And recycle. Discharge.
It was, it was a customized, uh, water filtration system.
Because the requirement is if there's any chemicals in that water...
That's right.
It could ruin, ruin the harvest, so I think that's why they made sure that it's basically distilled product, and then they put whatever chemicals they feel is appropriate to go.
Don't they recycle that water and just keep using it?
They kept using it on-site, yes, that was what they were doing.
It's a self-contained.
It's a self-contained system.
So, um, that's something that they did, we don't have a requirement, but for the public health and safety aspect, uh, it could be something you guys require.
Good.
As moving it forward, uh, you know, um...
Oh, that I, is much of public health, I think it's, it's the science behind the grow.
Yeah, I mean, they might do that just 'cause they're treated water, you know, like, they wanna keep it on-site, they know what they're putting into it and then what they're getting out of it. I'm not saying that, um, but as far as consistency, that was something that you guys had asked before.
So, let's just say, should we clone what happened on Glachewski Drive for this?
I mean, you, you definitely could, um, we would, we'd, I mean, you couldn't clone everything, obviously that was a phased product, but like, and the fire department had different requirements on it. Glachewski had sidewalks built in, this one doesn't. Um, there's, there's other things that, like, when we're looking at this, um, you know, there's aspects of this that, like, you know, even the parking lot, um, requirements on here, that's a pretty standard parking lot, the zoning ordinance calls for much, anything over ten spaces, they have a, a much better furnished parking lot than that. So when we look at, like, the, the requirements of zoning ordinance, and even though this is a special use and we can weigh some of those requirements, um, do we want to in that instance? And then there, the green space buffer and, and other things, you could look to clone it, but at the same time, this is a different project. There are certain things that are gonna glaringly stick out, um, when you look at, when you look at this, I mean, that, that is probably an improvement over what's existing, um, however, uh, if this was not, if this was like, uh, a commercial area, we'd obviously expect something different. It does buffer up to a residential area, however, if you put a green space buffer on here, just things to consider, are you gonna see that parking lot? So then, does it really matter, you know, your beautification? So, um, there's a little bit of give and take in this, and portions of that is, hey, we're willing to relax this a little bit on the parking requirements, but we wanna, we want our green space buffer to, and a security, you know, a, a fencing system around this, this property for the simple fact of, yes, we realize it's a marijuana grow, if you don't think the, the neighborhood's gonna realize what it is, um, the neighbors are probably gonna work there, so they're gonna be aware, and, um, for the safety of the citizens and, and plus to reduce police, uh, you know, activity in this area, even though there's a great camera system that is gonna monitor the area, you know, you might still wanna require fencing. So those are things that, like, we just kinda look at, um, and, and say, yes, you know, these are things that we've in the past required.
Is this, what is this zone, is this multiple use or is it...
That's, uh, zoned, uh, general, industrial.
General industrial, yeah.
And permissible for a grow.
A grow, uh, yeah, grow facility, yeah.
And that's why, I mean, otherwise this would not be...
Right.
Um, in residential neighborhoods, absolutely not.
Mm-hmm.
But bordering one, that's when we usually require a green space buffer.
Yeah, understood.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Now, are you talking a berm or are you just talking on a, on a green space buffer? Is it a berm or are you...
So, uh, green space buffer, Katie, you have that here, don't you?
Um, so, when, and I can just read, this is directly from the zoning ordinance, so when a proposed commercial use is contiguous to an existing single unit or duplex dwelling, the planning commission may require an additional buffer consisting of a twenty-five-foot side and rear setback, a four-foot-high landscape berm or solid fence up to four feet in height or any combination thereof.
Okay, there you go.
So it kinda gives you the options and it's a may, so really, you know, you can take that and whatever the commission sees fit and appropriate for, you know, this type of development and the type of residential housing that's there, the density.
Or we could basically just use that and say it has to be compliant with that...
Yeah, and, and just to be clear, this is a green space buffer for like, commercial areas, in the industrial area, you can have up to eight, uh, eight-foot-high fences, so if you feel that the four-foot isn't enough, you could go higher.
Uh-huh.
If you're going, looking at the fencing. Now, if it's an actual berm or a green space area, then yeah, four feet.
Yeah, my personal view is that you wouldn't want an eight-foot fence, because then it makes it look even uglier than, I think, the berming and with the building, you, you know, you'd still be able to see Manistee Lake, I, I would hate to think that it would, that whole acreage would be closed off.
That'd be awful.
Yeah.
Whatever they see fit, I don't know.
Let's say, I'm just looking at, at 12th Street.
Uh-huh.
And there's no way to put a berm there, there's no room, there's no room.
So that's what I'm saying, just compliant.
You guys, and, and the, the secure fencing and, and whatnot might be a state requirement, so like, you know, it, it's something that we've just required on every other fencing for security purposes, and if it doesn't fit, though, you know...
Yeah, that's right.
I, I mean, you can't, you can't let them put it on city property, so, the building could act as it, you could say up to the building side and, and call it good, I mean, I, I don't know, I mean, that's right on, and that might even be over the property line is, is, it's, you know, it's, it's right on it, so, um, you might have to get inventive, is all I'm saying, but...
Yeah, for plowing, um...
Yeah.
Because the building would kinda qualify as part of the fencing a little bit there.
Yeah, I, I think just the Manistee Street is really the area that we definitely want to have some kind of green space.
Well, that's the biggest area.
Yeah, and it's the ugliest.
Yeah, it's the ugliest.
Something that you could consider that would kind of incorporate the parking lot as well is, I know that there, you know, it looks like there is some area that you may be able to incorporate some landscaping, if that's something that the commission would want, um, you know, on the kind of one side of the building and south side of the parking lot. And then that also, you know, slightly faces Manistee Street, so you're not only providing landscaping for 12th Street, but kind of that corner of Manistee as well.
Right, and there's always like, the areas that are built, beat up and crumbling concrete, you could ask for, um, you know, and then the seed that with like, uh, some grass and try to, you know, pull some of that out and hydroseed that, um, and try to grow grass there, I mean, essentially, like, the idea is, uh, to make it a little bit more greener in this area, which will help out with the water, um, runoff that you're, you're, you're concerned about, um...
Yeah, that's true, it would absorb some of that, yeah.
Hi, can I ask a question of the applicant?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Um, on the, on the parking lot, which would be, it's running north, you have the driveway coming in, and it shows a twenty-six-foot, uh, width, and it moves around and, and turns back south, what is that?
I'm trying to think, I think that was for, that's where the delivery, the, the road that comes around along the tracks, that was for, that's where the delivery is, and I think that's where that overhead door is or the dock, you can see it there.
So it looks like it, there, it looks like you're showing that door, and then...
I'm positive this thing is compliant, because the architect, I've used several times, and a couple of things, as long as I'm up here, that I didn't notice, I, I really liked the idea that Mike and you notated, and that the whole purpose with this building was, is the views are spectacular out at the lake, so I like the idea of putting the fence along 12th, maybe, you know, the, some tree, whatever in the front, but I don't think you wanna take away, the building's gonna look beautiful as it does, not now, but driving down 12th, that lake, stunning, so I don't think, and the setback is so far back, it's well within it, so it's just gonna be a huge improvement, and I really believe, like I wrote in there, it's a big win for the city. Also, Zach and I did speak with the fire department, I don't know if it came up, and they approved it for the fire trucks, I mean, this isn't really, this is something that offered.
They have to access at least three sides, so...
Yeah, so I think we've addressed all that, I didn't get the chance, because I, I can tell you brought up those, but really believe it will pick up the whole area, obviously grass and sod and everything's gonna be planted in the front, and a whole west side, so from the streetscape, it's gonna look incredible. And Zach was very clear to me that...
This is it right here.
Uh, that, that I didn't mention, that no one brought up, that probably sidewalks are gonna have to be put in, probably curb and gutter that are not there, so there's a whole host of improvements that are gonna go on this area in the building, but yeah, as far as the fencing and stuff, I, I like your idea on the 12th Street, but the, the rest of it, I mean, that view is just spectacular and it's all water view, it's going down that whole stretch, so hopefully we can come to some sort of...
Well, I'm sure you can.
There is, there is, uh, just clarification, looking at this, um, where the building outlines here, there is, if you look at this, I know it's very difficult to read...
Yeah, that's what I mean, yeah.
Uh, on column prep, there's a double door there, there is no door, but there is a room that is ten by three, um, by probably about twenty, maybe eighteen, that looks like where the door would be for loading and unloading, um, you know, that room's not labeled, so...
Positive, it, it's there, yeah, there's a loading dock or whatever's mandated.
Yeah, I couldn't read any of the fine print on it.
Right, so if we, if we go from the top left, it's a flower room, a bedroom, a mother clone, an office, security, going down, office, a locker room with two toilets, to the right is a commercial going, commercial kitchen going down, post-extraction, then, uh, column prep, to the left is post-package, or post-processing, packaging and inventory, trim packaging, drying room, uh, an office that doesn't appear to be, um, labeled, and then there's delivery storage on the left there, if you go down, it looks like fertilizer and electrical room, and then another flower room to the left, um...
I can't see nothing.
So...
I can't see that stuff, bitch.
It kinda does look like a door on the west side there.
It does, but it's not marked, so...
This, this little...
Oh, yeah, there, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
There you go, she got it up, there you go.
This is a little bit better.
Yeah, that's, okay.
So this is what, is this the north side of the building I'm showing?
That's the north side right there.
So go on the other side.
Down in the south, that is where that spot is.
So the other door is here.
Yeah, right there, you gotta send it.
Delivery, storage, this is a single door.
Here's the overhead door right here.
There's the dock right to the south.
Oh, yeah, delivery store, yeah.
Right here, okay.
That would work, that would take the secure...
Oh, yeah, there you go.
You have to designate that as a secure transport area, though, and it's not designated that currently. Um, I don't think the secure transport, though, as well, cannot be open to the rest of the building, I think it has to be like a pull-up and that's secured, I'm not positive on that, but I thought that's what, it wasn't clutching.
Matter of putting a couple more doors and walls in to make it...
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing with it.
I don't know that it has to, I think it just has to be secured from the outside.
If you look at the north side where he's actually got the, where the drive comes in on the building, it actually comes in right there, uh, that, right there. It comes in there, there's a double door there, I don't know what that office is, um, but that is actually on the drawing, the main drawing, um, Katie, if you'll take us over there.
Yep.
Uh, where the driveway comes in, that is... That is where it comes in at, right there, you can see it?
Uh-huh.
Right there. So you guys are looking at what is essentially on the east side of the building.
Right.
Where, and, and while it might be the loading and unloading dock that was in existence, it is currently not designated on the plan as anything but a broken concrete. So, why I wanna make this work, it, it needs to make, make sense as well.
Yeah.
The part of the plan doesn't match this.
That's correct.
Yeah, that's what I...
I mean, it, it might, it might, it just...
But one or the other isn't correct.
Well, that might not be where they anticipated loading and unloading, that might just be what's existing, so, um, it's just not shown.
Right, right.
And if it's a stipulation you wanna make, then you guys could change that area for them and dictate it as their unloading and loading portion of it, um, uh, for secure transport. Now, if you wanna, uh, look at other options, then we can do so, you know, and, and try to work with Ken to come up with something.
Well, whatever he needs to do to keep the thing moving is, I think, is, you know, the easiest option we should go with.
I think that, uh, a stipulation along the lines of, with all these other stipulations, mind you, that we've mentioned, um, looking at something that, you know, meets the local and state requirements, and also that, um, if a secure transport and everything has to take place indoors, which we are, uh, also a stipulation that says the grow has to be indoors, um, but some sort of stipulation along lines of, uh, you know, if, if indoor transport is required, um, then, uh, he has to come back, um, before us for, uh, final approval or, and I'm, I'm hesitant to even call it final approval or even give approval, because once you say that, it is very difficult to come back, um, and, and do it again, because you've basically said you're, it's out of your hands. So, um, it, as much as I wanna move it forward, I think, uh, coming up with a stipulation of that magnitude tonight without knowing the requirements of it is, is extremely difficult, and I, I would, I would have a hard time and struggle to do so, um, that would meet the requirements of what we are needed. Now, a simple something of long lines of like, you know, something we've done in the past, which is much easier on like, hey, well, you know, we wanna see this, and if the fire department blasts off on it, we'll give them final approval or whatever, is a little bit more different than amending an entire site plan, um, because something's required by the state that we can't dictate, it's, it's really difficult for us to do. But it's not out of the thing to, just to call another meeting in, uh, a week's time and, and make sure we have this hashed out. Uh, you know, I wanna see it move forward, um, I'm sure you guys do as well, um, I just wanna make sure we do it right, because, um, getting it wrong, we've seen what happens when we do.
Well, we don't wanna rush into it, yes, we do.
Looking at this plan, he's actually got two potential loading dock sites, so it could be one or the other, we'll have to just figure out which one would work.
I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying, Bob, I'm just saying that the rest of the site plan doesn't match any of that, so like...
Right.
So we need a new one.
That's gonna be after something, we have to hash out where it's gonna be.
I mean, even now, if all loading would take place outdoors, according to this plan, because there is no place to do it.
Right.
Yeah.
And there's not even a, a loading area dictated on the plan, so like, and that's something we've done for everyone, so, um...
Let him know what we need as a new site plan with what the requirements that we just talked about.
Right, and, and I think if we can get, um, the city attorney, I, I don't know any returns, um, the thirteenth, which is...
I think today's the eighth or seventh.
But he's got a substitute.
He does have a substitute, okay, so if, oh, it's Richard?
Yeah, Rich Wilson is...
Okay, okay, I'm confident we could get this moving along pretty quickly if Richard's his subs, um, so, regardless, we're still in the, the public hearing portion of it, I'll leave it at that and I apologize.
Okay.
Uh-huh.
Is that it for staff?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, it is eight eleven, we'll close the public hearing.
All right.
Move along to public comments on agenda-related items, if there's anyone in the audience that has a, uh, comment on the agenda, please come to the podium.
If you wanna say something.
If you have a public comment.
Yeah, I hope you guys consider somehow, I gotta keep this moving, I don't wanna, I don't, I think I've done enough goodwill, this is also another goodwill project, um, this is also another goodwill project, um, I have no malice intention, no bad intention for the city, I think you've seen that with my other projects, so, delaying it with everything that's going on, I don't think it's gonna help anyone, um, whatever needs to be done, if it's a door or whatever, it, nobody seems to know right now, rather than talking to the attorney, so, this is, I mean, there should be no reason, I would think, that it couldn't be approved, that it is, so I can keep moving forward on my end. Or anyway, so if you see something that you don't like.
We're not here to hinder you or make you spend more money for material and stuff, but our job is to protect the residents here, make sure everything is done legally, and without having an inside door, overhead door, to bring your delivery trucks in and transport stuff, I can't unapprove that, everything, and if we can expedite with the city attorney and you can expedite with a new site plan, we can call a special meeting and that will help, help you.
So the only thing you need is just to see where a door is, I mean, there's no way.
I think it's more than a door, you have to have a secure inside spot to come in and out, that's the way I read it.
Just clear revise floor plan.
Yeah.
Well, the, the floor plan and the parking lot plan, because neither of them connect, even, even if we looked at just what you gave us and the two, those two don't connect either, they're, the, the sidewalks don't go into where the door should be, the, the, you know, it, it's not aligned to be one fitting into the other.
This was all approved by Zach before I turned it in.
Is it?
Yeah.
Really?
So.
Yeah, I don't know what to tell you, boss.
But I mean, you know, again, I, if, I'm, I'm just looking at it, but where it looks like where the, where the entrance is from this, I guess that would be the sidewalk off of there, it looks like they're going into places that aren't connected in, because there's one, two, three doorways on that side, and there's two entrances, but they don't.
Two doorways on the.
It doesn't look like they align up.
There's only two doorways on the west side, and.
Yeah, two doorways.
Yeah, the alignment of where the sidewalks going into the building doesn't match where the doors are on the floor plan.
Are those city ordinances or are those mandated by the state?
What they're saying is that, that the scale of the drawing is off.
Yeah.
Yeah, what they're getting at is that what they're seeing, what we're seeing on, you know, the overall site plan doesn't necessarily correlate with what they're seeing, you know, with the entrances and exits here, um, with having, I believe, a bigger door was pointed out down here, but the loading areas and then to the door.
They're sitting right here as well, so like, this door right here and this door right here, when referenced over here.
Right.
Don't be, appear to be, to scale.
Yeah, something is wrong on these sidewalks going into the building, where the doorways are.
Right, well, I guess I, it just seemed like there were minor.
That's, that's something that can be fixed. Something like they just threw this.
Yeah.
That's a, that's just a minor issue, just moving that sidewalk and those path things into it, to get them to work.
And, Mark, if I might ask one question to the staff here, with this list that we have with three hundred feet, all these people were contacted of what this gentleman plans on doing and no one corresponded?
Correct.
Exactly.
Yeah, I was actually a little shocked by that as well, but, but they must be okay with it.
Yep.
Well, obviously, I mean, I don't want them coming back after the poor man's, you know, putting nails to the wood and saying, geez, I didn't know he's building a marijuana thing.
Yeah, tonight would have been their night and opportunity, if, if you guys bring him back, you know, they would have already been made aware, I don't think the public would get involved at that point.
Even, even if we table it and call another meeting to, uh, after we get more information, it's, we don't have to redo the public hearing aspect of it, it will, it will just be, you know, and.
Public hearing's over.
Right, so we won't have to, uh.
Go through this.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
Uh, moving along, new business, fifty-one Ninth Street.
Yeah.
Yep.
Session?
Well, okay, on general principle, I would approve the consent.
Yes.
However, because we've already, on two different loc, two different other, um, builds for growth facilities, we've made mandates and, and had them, had them provide what we were expecting before we approved it, it would be unfair, uh, for us to now, uh, make an exception to that when we're literally looking at almost an identical from what we did with the Glucheski property. However, you know, there, I don't see there's any, any showstoppers, in my, just from my view, uh, the, the location is sound, in general terms, I, I think it's, it's probably going to, to meet the, the city's criteria, the state obviously has much higher standards for these than, than we would from just a planning perspective, uh, and that includes, you know, I believe they even had the fencing requirement. I, I can't swear to it, and I know there's been changes since it originally started, but I believe it, I did also require a fencing, and I don't know if you had planned on doing that, having fencing around the building, doesn't have to go around your whole property, but I believe there has to be a fenced buffer between the building and the, the property. And, and again, I can't swear to it, it's been a couple of years since I read all of that information, so that's.
That's my, the thing I, the thing I only have a problem with is just the floor plan needs some tweaking, everything else looks pretty good, just that interior floor plan needs some tweaking.
Yeah.
Pam?
Yeah, I, I think we're all in favor of this project, we're just, we're holding everybody to the same standard, we're not picking on you and making it more expensive for you to do this, we just expect this, you to do the same thing that we've had other people do, but I, I don't think any of us are, are opposed to the project, and as soon as we get, you know, all, all the things that we've asked other people to do to get you to do it too, I, I, I see it going through.
So the issue is just depicting where the, where the overhead door is or the.
Yeah, and we have, where, where the sidewalk would come into the buildings, where the overhead door would be for, that, those basic things, and then I would also suggest that you, you know, look at, if you could, you know, uh, annotating the fact that there would be a buffer across Manistee Street, uh, and, and that, you know, we would, you know, you know, fencing would be as required by the state, those kinds of things in your.
Full of unbalance, not taking away the views of the lake too.
Yeah, and, and there's no requirement for that, I, I mean, I.
What would be a way to expedite it if I, I mean, I'll be on the phone with the architect tonight.
Let us, let us get through this, okay, so, move along, Shelley.
Um, I just wanted to clarify, because I, I agree with all the comments that, that have been stated, I, I don't, uh, we, we wanna encourage people to invest around here, um, wasn't there also a question, Mike or Katie, about getting some clarifying legal information, just so he understands what that is.
If it comes back and we talk to the city attorney tomorrow and we say, hey, there's no need for overhead doors, he doesn't have to put them in.
Okay.
Um, so.
And this would be, like you said, so he can attract a lessee that already has stipulations or requirements in place.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not typical that we get, um, somebody coming in that is, is operating in this aspect, um. Now, I know Ken has, has done this with other projects in the city as well, but he's usually had somebody locked in pretty tight, um, this is kind of a, a different one for us, um, and then, you know, the other thing we really wanna look at is like Glucheski, um, I think there is the desire to make sure we're consistent, um, I would like to see and review what we record on that, um, and that can be as simple as sending it out tomorrow. Um, the big thing for us is gonna be the, uh, um, just checking with the city attorney to make sure that this meets the, the requirements of the state and, and the secure transport on it, and, um, just to make sure that we're being consistent, and so, um, that's our big thing with it, we wanna, uh, you know, we probably need a day or two, and then, um, hopefully we can get our answer, uh, tomorrow and get it out to Ken, so he has a weekend to work through it, and then Monday morning, look to call another special meeting with you guys and, and establish something and get this across the finish line, um, but, um, there's other things, so like, if we really get into it, you know, the stipulations that I'm seeing, um, just off, you know, cuff, there needs to be a bike rack shown, this is a, a medium site plan project, there is no bike black rack shown, I know it's a small thing, um, but it needs to be shown, uh, we wanna push bikeability and walkability within the city, um, uh, people working in this place might wanna bike to work, they need to have a place to have it, and it's a requirement of the zoning ordinance. Um, the green space been discussed, the dumpsters, um, the carbon filtration, um, system, uh, um, typically, we want a little more information on like, you know, uh, that they use like, uh, a Michigan certified engineer or something along those lines on that, that comes up with it, uh, um.
Well, whatever more we got, but I would suggest then, before you get any farther advanced, like tonight with your architect and that, talk to Mike and Kate and, uh, make sure that what, whatever we need from you, you know, so you can pass it on to your people.
Yeah, that was, that was gonna be my comment, that, that hopefully, when he leaves here, within the next day or two, that he's got a clear understanding, whether he's gotta come back.
We'd really like to get him his answer before the weekend, so that he can revise it, but.
We'll have a meeting next month or next week for you.
Yeah, we'll reach out to the city manager and just say, you know, we really need an answer, um, and try to put some urgency on this, I mean, I, I don't wanna make him, him wait.
No.
Um, and I, I do realize what's, you know, what's at stake for him, so, uh, if we can apply a little pressure through the city manager to get us an answer, then I think we'll be fine.
Good idea.
As soon as we get an answer, he's got, he can get stuff for his architect to fix.
Right.
Yeah.
Other things you have on here, just to let you guys know, we don't have a termination date built in this, uh, special use permits, um, we would request that you guys put one of those in, um, we look at, we're looking at making an amendment, just to let you know, that has a, a two-year default, and, um, if you guys stipulate it needs to be longer or shorter, you can do that, but by default, it would be two years, so as we have these general discussions and somebody misses it, um, we aren't held there like, oh, well, it's just open, um, so we don't have that currently, so please put a termination date on this. Uh, he said that there's no signage and no lighting, I would also make those stipulations, um, it's a big portion of it is.
Lighting would be as, as required by the state.
If, if that is, but.
And, and then whatever lighting we would expect for the parking lot.
Yeah, the, uh, I would still stipulate something, um, for the simple fact of, you do have cutoff fixtures to, um, as a requirement within the city of Manistee, um, and to keep like dark sky, um, we'll attempt to, I mean, we're a little ways off, but, um, we don't wanna put any new lighting in that is, uh, that violates that, and if there is lighting that's gonna be placed, he would then need a lumen plan, um, so, these are the issues that, that, that basically come about, that we don't have an answer to, um, that we wouldn't allow other people to go and move forward with either, um, so no signage, if he doesn't want signage, we dictate that, um, because, uh, we ran into issues in the past where people are saying, we're not gonna have signage, and then they come back and want signage, and that is actually an amendment to the special use permit, where they attempt to go through just a sign permit. Um, you guys might not have permitted it had it wanted signage, um, so, you know, these are things that when we, when we look at our, I'm not saying on this project, but I'm saying on others, um, when we look at our stipulations, um, we need to be able to not only say, okay, you know, he had said that there's gonna be no signage, we're gonna, we're gonna adhere to that, so, um, we granted it with no signage, now to come back and amend it, if he wants to come back forward and present you something, awesome, otherwise, you guys wanna see signage, um, so, and I'm not saying Ken, I, I wanna be clear, Ken's done a lot of, you know, great projects so far, um, it's just unfortunate that this one kinda, um, yeah, was not where we wanted it when it came through, so, uh, as we look through these, that's really the, the issues I have, Katie, do you have anything?
I'm not sure if everyone has had a chance to speak.
Marlene and, and Roger.
Okay, I was just gonna say, I have been taking notes, if you wanted me to kinda go through, um, the items that have been discussed, just to make sure everyone's on the same page, and then I can, you know, start to compile that information and make sure it gets to Ken as soon as possible.
That's.
So if you guys wanted to continue, um.
Marlene?
No, I think everything's been brought up that I.
Roger, you good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay.
Can't hear not much else we can say.
So, um, move along, so is there a motion to approve, deny, or table?
Well, the discussion was Katie was just gonna read off stipulations that we brought forward, if we can get that to Ken and his people, then we can get back together on Monday, so we would have to table or.
We, we do stipulations, I mean, stipulations first or?
Yeah, I mean, it's up to you guys, um.
It's, I mean, if you guys wanna compile a list, that's fine, Katie's, uh, go ahead, Katie.
Yeah, I was more so just gonna kind of reiterate everything that's been discussed to make sure that, you know, we're covering everything just kind of as a last, you know, conclusion, um, that can be before or after you guys make your decision, I think ultimately, these things are, well, I guess we can go over it before, because that may, in a sense, impact your decision.
Let's do that.
Okay, so internal transport was a question, is this required, we need to figure that out, um, if that's required through the state, through the attorney, so that's something that, um, staff is going to work on, um, stipulations?
I, I think we need to clarify, I'm not sure so much that in, internal transport, but secure, there is, there a requirement for a secure area for loading and unloading of products?
Right, yeah.
Because you're confusing it, because transport is a separate business.
It's a separate business altogether, yeah.
Okay, so yeah, using not great terminology for that, interchanging, thank you for that.
What I do is determine whether or not they have to have an area, a secure area for loading and unloading of products.
Okay, yes, thank you.
Indoor.
Indoor.
Yeah. Now, secure could mean as well, uh, just a fenced in area, so, is it an indoor area? And then if it's not, is it just secure as in fenced in as well?
Right, okay, cool, thank you for that, um, the stipulations for Glucheski, I am going to pull up that permit, and I think that would be helpful to, um, I don't know if you guys want me to send that off to everyone, I think that could be helpful to provide to Ken, so that he has an idea of the stipulations that you guys wanna require, um.
Well, and also, it gives him an opportunity to say, well, this doesn't pertain to this property, you know,
Right.
Kind of push back where you see, because again, it isn't necessarily exactly the same, but.
Yeah, it's different.
Mm-hmm, um, the site plan to scale with interior plans, we wanna see exterior site plans matching the interior site plans.
Readable, readable.
Yes, and I will request a full-scale plan of the interior, I don't believe that was requested of you previously, so we'll just make sure we cover that. Um, a landscape buffer on Twelfth Street was discussed, um, briefly, I'm not sure if that's something that you guys still wanna see, bike rack, termination date, and if the state requires lighting, if so, um, we will see, need to see a lumen plan.
And fencing?
And fencing, yep, um, the police department did, um, include that on their site plan review memo, so, um, we can definitely double down on that, though.
Yeah. The, the green space buffer was on Manistee Street, I think.
And the car, well, with the Glucheski Drive, uh, the carbon filtration.
Oh, I thought they wanted it here, but.
Uh, third-party engineer.
I thought just right here.
Yeah. Was, was the green space buffer, just for clarification, on Manistee Street or twelve?
SD Street.
On Manistee, okay.
There's really no room on Twelfth.
Okay, yeah.
Talk about fencing.
Well, we looked at, at fencing as a state requirement, they might require the building itself to be fenced in, which is problematic for this.
Yeah, location.
Right.
Yeah, so if that could get over to Ken as soon as possible, and he can get to his people with what we just read off.
Right.
Next week, we could come back and you could be.
Does that seem to encompass everything that you guys discussed, was there anything that I missed?
Well, the, I, I know within the Glucheski project, there's the carbon filtration.
Uh-huh.
Third parties certification or engineer certify that.
And that's in the Glucheski permit, and we can copy the exact language out of there, and then send that off to Ken and saying, this is what's probably gonna be required, and then have it, you know, as a pre-stipulation as to something that you guys want.
Yeah, Nick, Nick, I was wondering, but the only signage that we want on there is the address, the correct address.
Yeah, that's a county requirement, that they have three inch, uh, um, number.
And it can be larger, but that's.
At least three inch.
When we say no signage, we wanna.
Want an address.
So, I'm sure you'd like to have mail delivered, so.
You'll be able to.
I think some still has the old Century address, the old, uh, block lettering from Century.
Yeah, that's a true.
So.
Yeah, well, there you go.
So, I make a motion that. So I make a motion that we table this until we can get a legal review and the information to Mr. Armour based on the notes that were just read from Kate.
I'll second that.
Second. Roger, any...
I'd add to that that we should be able to schedule a meeting as soon as possible after that.
Oh, yeah.
So if the table goes through, can we schedule it for next Thursday?
We would just, I mean, it's really, it's about the legal review and how fast that they can put together the plan. If, so, I mean...
With a proposed date of next Thursday.
Right, yeah. I mean, you could propose it. I mean, the, you guys can do that, that's fine, but we we might be, if, what if we don't get the information? Or what if the legal review takes longer? Or what if the plans don't come in?
And when we get all the information we need, we'll have a meeting. In those terms, have a meeting if we don't have all the...
I mean, a special meeting can be called rather quickly.
Yeah, on a Thursday either.
Right, you're not holding, and you're not holding, you're not holding a public hearing because it's taking place.
You're only subject to 18 hours notice.
You're only subject to 18 hours notice.
Right. As soon as as possible.
As soon as possible.
Soon as possible. Okay?
Yeah, I'll say.
So motion has been made, second. I think we're all good, so please take roll.
Yes.
Commissioner Simeonski?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Remberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
All of us, Mr. Armour, would like to see this go through, want it, want it to go through. It's a huge improvement for the area. It's been lighted since about 1986 when Century moved away.
Century pulled up.
So we just want everything to work for you, and as soon as, soon as that information comes back, we can go forward and have a meeting, so.
Awesome. I appreciate your time. I'll get on as soon as...
We'll be in touch.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Take care.
Old business.
Old business.
Like we have none?
Old business.
None? Public comments, communication? There's anyone left in the audience?
A couple people back there, Mark.
Must be ghost runners. So...
Was Kate?
Jennifer Heskey.
Staff reports, 314 7th Street.
Yes, I just wanted to briefly update you guys that I have not received the requested information yet, but he has been in contact with me. You know, I've received calls at least once a week letting me know that things are being worked on, and, you know, he's getting there. So hopefully, those planes will come back through and will be to, you know, your satisfaction, but we'll have to wait and see on that. One item that I did want to bring up while reviewing the procedural aspects of special use permits, that is, I guess, relative to 7th Street, but just in general as well, is that for your special review or special use action, so it gets into after the public hearing, you do your review, you can send it to city planning personnel, the engineer. And then this is where it's the important part that I wanted to point out. Upon review of all relevant information, the planning commission shall reach a decision to approve, approve with conditions, or deny the application. Such decision shall be reached not later than the second regularly scheduled meeting following the public hearing on the application or receipt of any additional information requested unless the applicant and the planning commission mutually agree to extend the time allowed for the planning commission to reach a decision. However, the planning commission shall render a decision within 30 days of the applicant's written request for a determination, whether or not all requested information has been submitted. So, you know, by the third meeting after a public, you have your public hearing, have a meeting, by that third meeting, both parties have to mutually agree for more time, another table. If that's not mutually agreed upon, then you guys do have to render a decision. So for example, if an applicant may, you know, maybe didn't have everything that you guys were looking for, but was not willing to agree to extend, you would have to come to a decision that night, whether it's approving with stipulations or denial, you know.
So the next meeting would be the third meeting?
It would be the third, for the 7th project, yes.
So we just thought that was important to point out to you guys.
And it is regularly scheduled meeting, so the special meeting would not agree that.
Yeah.
And do you have anything else?
Nope, that was just a brief update on special use that we wanted to give you guys. And, yeah, I guess, you know, as I continue to work with the city, I definitely want to, you know, keep up on these procedural things, try to create forms here and there, and just do do things that will make everyone's lives easier in the end, so.
Thank you.
Yes.
With with that said, we, one thing we would like to do is, I sat down and really reviewed these with Katie, and we we both noticed that we think it might be beneficial to sit down and do like a quick training session on like the procedural aspects of special use permits and planned unit developments, show you some other, some other cities and what they're doing and why they're doing it, as well as just kind of generally talk about it. Like the non-termination date on a special use permit has been problematic from our aspect. We're doing a lot of record keeping for the city. We're coming back on records that weren't updated for almost 20 years, and they never were closed out. So we're basically going back through and cleaning up the BSNA system. We're also trying to go back through file structures that are in hard copy but have never been organized. We're putting our staff on that.
You're mean.
All not, all not in the contract, but that's all right. It will make our jobs infinitely easier going forward, and we're scanning those in, so into the system to try to make it easier so that when we're like, how many open permits are there, we can sit there and tell you, in the city, there are this many special use permits, this many PUDs, and this many open permits. They're open on this date, they will be expiring on this date. Currently, we can't do that. When we started the process two months ago, three months ago, maybe, was it that, three months ago?
I remember it was brought up once before, so it's probably been about three months.
And we had something like 500 open permits in the city. Some of those were building permits from the building department that no longer exists. We we've been closing them out. I think we're down to about 100 and probably 70.
Yeah, essentially, the system wasn't necessarily utilized in a way, you know, that it should be always, which is not really anyone's fault, but we're just trying to get it to the point where we can really run those reports and use it the way that it's supposed to be used. And I think it will be really beneficial for everyone to be able to see, you know, what's out there and what's open.
And then say, you know, and then at the end of the year, it makes our closeout a lot easier when we're going around and we're saying, okay, we have, this is what's open. Hey, there's a special use permit on this property. It's continuing. The process of actually getting rid of special use permits that have been granted approval is to come back through you guys and for you guys to deny it at the same way currently that they were applied for. We've reached out to some subject matter experts because Cadillac has a way of just nullifying it. We've been looking around at this, saying like, so if they, if somebody doesn't build out within their expected timeframe, then they actually are just able to nullify it without coming back through the planning commission. Everywhere else we've seen requires that they go back through the planning commission. We reached out to a subject matter expert with MSU extensions and requested clarification on that because apparently there was a court case about which way was the proper way a couple years back that current, current people don't remember which way was the correct outcome. It seems that the way that we have is what everybody else does, but we're wondering if we could just turn it to a nullification where we didn't have to follow the process because it's different if they built something, it's different if you guys granted it and they signed it, but they never actually built it out.
So it's just like an automatic expiration of...
Right, but right now, we have some special uses that have been granted from over 10 years ago that have never been closed out. So the issue becomes, we're going to have a massive night of closeout, and and that's the way we'd have to do it right now. Think of all the marijuana grows that we we approved last year that never built, or I'm sorry, two years ago, and then they never built out. We still granted approval, which means revoking those still require the same, the same way forward. Now, the termination, it it still says that you can terminate it, but you still have to follow the guidelines, which is first-class mailing to the the person that that was the owner of the property, and then let them know that we are revoking their special use permit. Now, some of these are very old, so it's...
It's going to be nearly impossible to follow the procedures that are currently laid out, basically, yeah.
But we're still going to give it our shot, and, but really, we'd like to know, can we change it and amend the ordinance to just nullify them, and then sit there and just send out a blanket letter and letting them know it's been nullified. So that's something that we're we're looking into, but in the meantime, we would like to close out some of these permits that we opened up, which would be the marijuana retails in, on Arthur Street. So if if it's revoking those, if they were actually recorded, and the permit was issued under a special use permit, then we would like to revoke them. If they haven't been, then no permit was actually issued. So some of them, they never signed them, they never came in, they never did anything with them once we're granted approval. Those aren't actual permits. But the ones that they did and they recorded, we still have to revoke them because technically now they're on the the title, or I'm sorry, the title, the deed of the of the property, saying that, yes, there is a special use for this that's been granted. And then we have to go back and revoke it. So it's it's a bit of a mess, and you know, to keep it professional and move it forward in the proper way, we'd like to clean that up. Like I said, we've really been crushing on it, but it is a a long process. You have to go basically street by street, property by property. And we've gotten all the vertical streets.
So the the training that you mentioned, is that something that you're thinking?
Yeah, we had just put on, and we'd we'd offer, you know, you guys to come in, and we'd do it as like a work session. And then like, once we get the training built, and but that's something we'd like to do, time allowing, you know, with building costs being up, it is allowing us to do these additional things that maybe in the past couple of years we haven't been able to do. And, you know, we're not just being flooded by special use permits or work, or at this point in time, it is still early in the season.
And I saw the townships.
Yeah. And so we, but we are looking to try to fix some of these things that we've noticed that, you know, we want to fix. So that's really what I wanted to bring to your guys' attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is great.
That's quite a little talk you had there.
And, you know, if you find any open work orders for 3 through 2 5th Street, I might be able to start working on them.
I didn't apply for any when I lived there.
Oh, no, they're already open. That's what I'm saying, you know.
We close off 363 10th.
Just close them all out, right, guys?
All right. Member discussion, Roger?
Yes, sir.
Anything?
Oh, how about that old hospital up there that, God darn it, it's been sitting vacant for months. How come somebody doesn't do anything about that, Mike?
Talking the one by...
By the rehab, you know, they did a rehab there.
It's owned by a company.
MCC School.
Hospital.
The one on the hill?
Yeah.
So the asset might be...
Been empty for about two or three.
I don't know, I could, I could pose that question to the economic development director. I cannot answer that.
Big club.
Oh, yeah, Marco, that city club has fallen apart. You been by there lately? That plaster they put on the outside, it's fallen off.
White.
Yep, yep. Well, that's what I meant, it's all part of the same group.
There's a little bit of white in town, so.
Is that the same, the same over?
Nothing.
Yes, the one down below?
Kelly?
Nothing.
Getting back to your closing out permits, is there any way to take care of permits that have no end date when they were initially issued?
Depends. So like, so with some of them, there's, there is actually a termination date with like planned unit developments. The issue with that is, you have to follow the process. So if somebody, if the developer comes back and beats you back to the process, then, and your your former whomever failed to send out a letter to the thing saying, we're going to revoke it, then it's still open.
And if the property changes hands?
It travels with the property.
Travels with the property.
So that's the problem that we're running into, is we're probably going to be contacting landowners that aren't aware that they have a special use permit open. There's a bed and breakfast I can think of, probably, who owns that, do you know? He's, he's a pretty prominent political figure too, and I'm sorry, I just don't remember his name, as far as, but he has a bed and breakfast. I don't know if he's aware of it. It's a permit that I found open, and I'm like, well, we'd like to close that out. I'm sure he's not running it as a bed and breakfast.
Say, must not be running it as one, okay?
No, no. I'm almost positive he's not. But there's things like that where we're like, so we're going to be hitting up people that have no idea that, you know, this is to follow the process and to get proper closure and minutes. We would like to follow that. But yeah, I mean, the PUD did have something in there to revoke. It actually has a termination date, I believe, of two years. And, but also, that's another process thing where, when you're looking at PUDs in general, if you grant a phase, and each phase needs to stand on its own, and if it can't, it shouldn't be granted as a phase. So, you know, some of these phases that we've seen, we've done a pretty good job on, like the fencing or the storage facility. They could close that off easily and and make it one single phase. They're actually on their last phase, they're about to close out everything. But there's certain ones that obviously are over 10 years old, weren't closed out correctly, might not even fit with the master plan now, certainly don't belong in the area of the zoning district because it's not even allowable use. So then when you, when you run into those, if the the process would have been followed, they would have been closed out, we wouldn't have been, you know, we would have had a new developer come in by now and and finished out the product. So, you know, unfortunately, I would say that we're not, we're not immune from, from failing at that as well. You know, look, we have Arthur Street open too, it's been two years, you know, like that's on us as well. So I mean, like, but we've, we've run over through the process, we understand what's going on. We want to close these out, we're going to, but now we're making you aware we're going to. And it is going to be a bit of a process, and there might be a little bit of heartache in it as far as people not understanding and education, we might get bombarded, but if we don't move forward to close them out, it it's just going to continue to be a problem.
And and they could have come back and request an extension, correct?
They could, they could. When they show up...
I mean, let's say that they have a legitimate reason that something was held up, like the Arthur Street perhaps, where the state fallen behind on licensing and things like that.
Or, or, I mean, you might even run into issues that when we go to close these out, these people find out they have a special use permit and...
And they want it.
And they want it. And then they're, they're going to request it, and I'd be like, you know, it's going to be, well, hey, this has been open for such and such long, like, you know, have you finished out your site plan? Have you done this? And a lot of these are just stagnant open. Most of the, most of the things in the city is if the use has discontinued for a year, it is, it is no longer viable, and we can close it out. And that's what I anticipate us falling back on. We're going to check again with the city attorney to sit there and say, hey, we really want to shore these up. You know, I, but I anticipate us falling back on that and saying, hey, you haven't been utilizing this for over a year. We're just, we're just really cleaning up permits, and we realize that you want to keep this, but we're closing it out, and you can reapply.
It's to your advantage to close them out.
Definitely.
Clean things up, like you say.
I've been going by on 1st Street by the old Pink Pump Building.
What?
The old Pink Pump Building right across District of Laundromat. The west wall is, or the east wall is falling down.
Oh, yeah.
They gave a look at holes.
Yep.
Oh, I saw that.
It's been that way for over a month.
The old bakery.
Yep.
I guess some blighted building.
What buildings is?
That's got to be by the laundromat at First and 31.
But there's a...
Laundromat, and then that brown house.
The police have gone.
On 31?
Well, 31 and 1st, there's the laundromat, and then that brown building.
I can only picture the laundry.
Is it by War Harder?
No, no.
No.
On the other side of the highway.
Before the fire, the north side of the shelf.
You're heading toward Tavern.
Okay.
Straight to the laundromat.
Is the city aware of it? Because they're issuing out tickets.
The police have gone there already, but...
Okay.
It's just, it's, it's falling.
That whole side of the giveaway.
There is a big, huge...
Towards Cadillac.
That people will be lost.
Only thing I have, thank you to Katie, welcome. One thing I have, thank you to Katie, welcome to your first meeting.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike, for everything. Nancy, as usual, you're spot on.
You know, your first meeting, we should get, go to at least 1201.
I actually did get to go to one of those. I don't know if you all recall that everyone in Manistee knew I wasn't from here when I had to read 400 Polish last name.
We put them down on that side.
Did a good job, Kate.
The Polish name is Mike Kazowski.
Yeah, there we go.
The good news is that the Catalan Ackles moving forward on their parking lot, the silk fence is up now.
All right.
Positives.
It is.
Trump is out, yep. The Family Video Store has been out of, has been out of business basically for over a year with this new smoke shop coming in. Can we mandate a monument sign and get rid of that damn sign? That tall.
So, I don't know, I mean, Mick, I know you were there when I gave the sign presentation. You run into issues with a regulate, regulatory taking. The, the sign has value, and it adds value to the property. I'm not saying that you guys can't request, or negotiate, or encourage, or.
Persuade.
Yes.
Highly motivate, mandate.
Yeah, but like.
It's not all great and obnoxious, though, so.
It's ugly, it just needs to go.
I mean, the, the issue is on 31, the only area that is the requirements for monument-type signing is within the marijuana overlay. It has not expanded to the rest of the city. There is a fierce fight back from the sign companies against that kind of changing of, of the types of signs in those areas. We ran into it before. We, if this is something that you look at, and I really stress this, when you, when you look at like redoing a sign ordinance, it's, it's an undertaking like a master plan. You have to have public input, you have to look at the areas, you have to look at transportation, what size of is appropriate. You talk to attorneys when they looked at helping with writing sign ordinances, they, they cringe because they know what it takes. The, the regulation on, on sign regulation right now is, it's not the time to rewrite it. And that's, it's unfortunate because there's a major Supreme Court case going in on sign regulation right now for not only off-premise, off-premise, I'm sorry. What are the large signs on the side?
Billboards.
Billboards, off-premise, sorry, that was like COVID rain right there, and I, I knew I could define it if you wanted me to, couldn't picture it. So there's off-premise billboard signs, the one that's a real big one is actually a billboard sign, so a famous case in 2015 that messed all of this up for us was Town of Gilbert versus.
Arizona?
No, it was, it wasn't Arizona, it was Gilbert versus, is it Town of Gilbert versus, I can't think of the guy's name. Any, anyways, but it, it was basically you can't regulate on content. So like, and then they, they drew a line between what is considered public free speech and commercial free, they, they grouped them together. And so, you, you can't sit there and regulate, so they're like, like church signs for like, were exempt because you couldn't regulate them. And you, you know, but like real estate signs you could because there, you could call them real estate signs, and you could define them in that manner. Now you have to do it all by size, and you can really only do like size and color is how you can regulate. So, what the hope is with this sign, this, this new case going through, and it's actually for, they're saying, we fall under, I'm sorry, I can't remember the court case, but we're on the Gilbert case. What's that?
Gilbert versus Reed.
Yeah, Gilbert versus Reed. And basically, the hope is that they, they make the definition between commercial and pri, or public or private speech, and make that distinction again. But what that one is, is actually, they said, we fall under the Gilbert case because you can't regulate on content, and they're trying to change existing billboard signs that are not digital to digital displays. And that's the big case, and, and a lot of sign companies don't even agree with it. But they're hoping that in the end, that it comes out with that distinction so that we can go back to regulating in a way that we did before, that everybody seemed to be okay with. But, you know, the, the Supreme Court made a ruling, and in my opinion, they weren't, they weren't clear enough on how they made it, and so then it was open, and then they had to come up with a certain way to, to, to essentially regulate that. So it's, it's interesting to see this go into it. We're really hoping that we get a positive outcome from it from a regulatory standpoint that it leaves, makes that distinction again, but there's really no guarantee what's going to happen. If they make that distinction, then things are really up in the air.
The signage was so contentious.
It, it really is, it really is.
I know, it gets brought up like at every meeting, I, I literally had no idea.
I can send you the presentation I gave to city council.
You should.
I will send that out to you. It's, it's interesting because then you actually see, and then there's, there's, if you do training, there's a 200-page thing about sign regulation that the Michigan Association of Planning puts out in conjunction with Michigan State Extensions, in conjunction with the Sign Makers of America, and basically just, it, it doesn't actually regulate anything, it just tells you the difficulties of regulating. And it's 200 pages, and.
Kurt Chandler did a thing for the, us one time through Michigan State Extension quite extensively on signage and the height and. Lights and all the different things.
Yeah, illumination's another problem. So, yeah, signage is, is an, is an issue that we realize that there is definitely a desire to, to go after signage and try to make it work for us in, in the different areas. However, we really encourage you guys to wait until that Supreme Court ruling comes down. One thing is, is we don't, we caution the city on spending money on regulating, or making a new sign ordinance and putting it out. You know, you spend a lot of money on something like that, having a firm do it, or, you know, for outside of us, and then coming in, it's all wrong, it doesn't apply anymore, and you really, you just really just threw your money away. So that's why we're like, really pump the brakes, let this go through, and then we'll see where we're at.
And the last thing that I have anyway, is since we're all here, if any commissioner's going to miss a meeting, please contact myself, or Bob, or Nancy, so we have a, so we're aware of who's going to be here and who's going to be missing, so. With that, it is nine o'clock. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.